This meeting of the La Sour City Council for the 22nd of November 2021 is called to order. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will be presenting this evening as the president of the council. The mayor is not able to be with us this evening. Our first agenda item of business is the approval of the agenda. Would one of the council members like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Huntington and Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have a presentation this evening. And Jack Roberts from the Planning Commission is going to speak with us. We want to make sure his microphone is on. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jack.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Jack Roberts. I'm the chair of the Plan Commission. One of the duties of the Plan Commission is to conduct some sort of future of the city forum. It's a tool that the Plan Commission and therefore the City Council can use to get a pulse on the city, see what's going on, what the residents think, and do some mid to long term planning. So to do that, the first step was to send out a survey, which Jasper and the city staff did right around Labor Day. It was a Survey Monkey survey. It's my understanding, all y'all have the results from that or at some point received them. It was a pretty lengthy survey. It was open for about, I think it was about five weeks to all the residents advertise on Facebook. If you don't have the results, I recommend you look at them. They're pretty detailed. There were a lot of just select appropriate answer and leave free form comments. And what we did at our last meeting in the Plan Commission was try to distill that survey and narrow down what the future of the city should focus on. And as you might imagine, the main issues people identified, I'm sure you could probably guess them, were taxes, utility rates and roads. But we had some discussion in the Plan Commission. Those aren't, it was our opinion that those weren't really appropriate items to discuss in a future of the city forum. Those are, for lack of a better term, ongoing issues that are always on your mind, I'm sure. So we tried to identify from the survey some broader, more open ended goals that we and the city leaders could focus on in the forum. And the ones we came up with based on the survey results, I guess the top three or four besides of those three issues were economic development, affordable housing, the community center, and the communication issues with city leadership. Those were the top four outside of the three already mentioned, the roads, taxes and utilities. So after we identified those, then we discussed what format this forum should take because it's really not defined. I mean, we can do anything we wanted theoretically. And what we decided was that first quarter 2022, we're going to have a future of the city forum. And the forum, we believe, should not be just the Plan Commission because we really have no power except to recommend things to you. We think it'd be in the best interest of the citizens to have all of the decision makers present. Plan Commission, heads of all the commissions, City Council, local, the school board, and local service organizations like Rotary and Lions and whoever else. The City Council and the Plan Commission decides how, whether it be churches, local business owners, and respond to the survey because it's, it's our fear that the survey might get put on the shelf. And really nothing comes out, but we just, thanks for your answers. And then we just keep doing the same thing. So that's, that's the format we think we should take. And it's kind of up in the air about when we're going to do that, what day of the week we're going to do that. If we're going to split it into perhaps a weekday evening and a weekend so that people with different jobs can attend. That's still under discussion. It's certainly welcome comments from y'all about how to do that. But at the forum, we would go over the survey results. We would go over, we would open it up for public comments if people want to elaborate on, on what they think should be done long term. And then the city leaders would respond with their plans to address those four issues. So it's going to take some preparation on the part of all the commissions and on part of the City Council and the mayor to address the issues that people have identified and the problems with the city. Because one of the questions on the survey was, as things, no, I'm sorry. As a community, you think La Sour is headed in the right direction? And 56% of the people approximately said no. So there's concerns in the city beyond the usual roads, taxes, utilities that people want to address. Jasper commented that he was surprised about people responding about economic development being an issue. But people do, meaning the lack of businesses, the lack of jobs. So that's something that we didn't expect on the survey. So those four topics come up. But again, we envisioned something, it's not just going to be the Plan Commission. I suppose administratively, they can organize it and advertise it. But we think it'd be helpful if the people who actually had decision making capability and not just the City Council, but other leaders across community were there to, to address these items. So that's it. Any questions?
Council members, have any questions for Mr. Roberts? Again, you said just sometime during the first quarter.
Our goal is first quarter 2022. We don't see any reason to put it off past that. We've done the survey in September. We don't think it would be prudent to delay past first quarter. We didn't want to do anything fourth quarter of this year since budgets and people aren't around for holidays. We didn't think that would be timely enough or too prudent enough. So yeah, first quarter 2022. I suppose the next step is the Plan Commission's going to meet in December at the regular meeting. Any feedback you have about it could either go to me for that meeting or whoever the chair is going to be in January won't be me. Because I won't be on the Plan Commission after this year. Or through Jasper, however you want to communicate that. We're not going to dictate how the meeting is going to go, but it'd be helpful if we had some input from the City Council about, you know, whether it be days of the week that you think are prudent or, or how you want to approach it.
Again, any questions or comments? Thank you, Jack. We appreciate the Planning Commission's work and we look forward to the forum.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the City Council at least two days prior to the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. I think what we'll do is, if someone wants to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, we'll, we'll do that and take a second if there is one. And then we'll have our city administrator explain some of the items on there. Actually, let's reverse that if we could. Our city administrator is joining us via the internet this evening. Jasper, if you would be so kind as to review some of the items on the consent agenda, the highlights.
Yeah, thank you, President Krogman. We have the, the City Council minutes from the last meeting on November 8th. There was one revision, there was a presentation on there that, that we removed. So, so there are updated minutes out there. We have dispersment approvals through November 22nd today. Items of note, there isn't much on there, just a, a street patching, bituminous asphalt for $27,000 to M&amp;W blacktopping. And then our sales tax payment that we have to do monthly to the Minnesota Department of Revenue. Those dispersments total just over $300,000 for this period. Next, we have a parade permit for the Christmas in the Valley Parade. As a reminder, that event is on December 3rd, Friday, December 3rd. So if you can make it out, that'd be, that'd be excellent. And lastly, we have personnel actions, a couple of hires. One is for a Zamboni driver and one is for a public services winter seasonal laborer. So one Zamboni driver and two, two seasonal laborers. And that's all we have on the consent agenda tonight. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Does anybody have any? We don't have any here, thank you. Now it would be appropriate if someone wants to make a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Swanberg. And Mr. Schleter seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? None? That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Public comment, we've checked, there's no one signed up. Do we have anybody online asking to participate? I believe so, but let's find out. None, okay? Thank you. And we'll move on because there's no public comment, there's no reason to dwell on that any further. Let's move forward then to the regular agenda. Item 7A, the budget review. I'll ask our city administrator and our finance director to please do their presentation. Gentlemen, this is simply a, an overview or review. There's no action taken tonight. Certainly you could ask questions, but the idea is to give you information and have you begin to process the complexity of what, what we're involved with here. Quite frankly, there's a lot there. And we thank our administrator and finance director for helping us go through this. So I'm not sure which of the two is going to speak first, but you're on.
Thanks, President Krogman. Krogman, um, City Administrator Krugel, would you like to say anything before I launch?
Yeah, I can just give a, just a quick statement here. Appreciate all the work Personnel and Budget Committee has done. I mean, this has been a challenging year. Every year it seems like we have a different challenge, it appears. But really, the Personnel and Budget Committee, you know, did a deep dive, looked at things item by item. And really what we want to accomplish today is to kind of get any input from City Council as far as if there's continued work that we need to do between now and when we adopt the budget in, in December. And we have some time for at least one or two more Personnel and Budget Committee meetings this year related to the budget. But we have met, I believe I checked it out 12 different times this year about the budget. And, you know, each meeting's anywhere from an hour to three hours long. So definitely put in, put in some time here to, to really, you know, look at the budget and, and come up what we think is best for, for, for us this next year. So that's all I have. I'll, I'll interject, there's questions, but really Joe will be doing the majority of the presentation today. And, and this is kind of, you'll, you'll likely see almost an identical presentation on the 13th. And, and what we want to do is just kind of get this in front of the full City Council so that any questions can come up before the, the actual budget meeting and we can get those addressed in a timely manner. So with that, I'll hand it over to Joe.
Thanks, Jasper.
Jasper, if you would, before we do that, would you explain to the council, not particularly them, because they know this, I'm sure, but also to the public, what, what occurs on the 13th? Particularly the required statutory work that we need to do?
Yes, very good reminder. So on the 13th, we have a public hearing for our truth in taxation. So it allows people to come in from the public to make public comment on our budget that, that we will present that day. As I, as I mentioned previously, the presentation will be very, very similar to what you see tonight. So there won't be any surprises to either City Council or the public. But, you know, we have about three weeks between now and when that budget will likely be adopted or will be considered for adoption. So if there is any fine tuning that we need to do, we do have some time to, to look at things as directed by City Council. So there will be a public hearing. That public hearing was noticed via your, your property tax statements. So on there, it's listed that, you know, our meeting is on December 13th at 6:30 at the City, City Hall, City Council Chamber. So, you know, if, if you're interested and you want to come in and see how that process goes or make a public comment to City Council, you are invited to come in.
Thank you. Joe?
Very good. Thank you, President Krogman. Thank you, City Administrator Krugel. So as Jasper will tell you, I'm a big believer in, in the idea of death by PowerPoint. And so I have to apologize a little bit before this because there are a number of slides here. It's mostly to get all the information in front of you and in front of the public, as much information as we can without going into more detail than necessary. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on each slide, but I do want to, you know, everyone feel free to jump in if you have questions, comments, concerns as we go through them. So I'll start off with just a little summary, as Jasper said. Personnel and Budget Committee kicked this process off with staff formally on July 1st of, earlier this year. Now, staff had begun meeting as early as May. And as any staff member here will tell you, the budget conversations never really end. It's just one continuous cycle. We've already, December 14th, we'll probably start having conversations around the 2023 budget. And then as actual financial results come in throughout the year, you know, we adjust at least mentally what we, you know, project for the following year's budget. But the, the process formally kicks off usually in that June-July timeframe with the Personnel and Budget Committee. And as Jasper said, they, they've met 12 times in the last, you know, five and a half months now. So we've had plenty of time to, to go through a lot of detail, probably more than they'd care to at times. But it really lots of good conversations and really truly appreciate their input. As we've, you know, Jasper and Rich Kucher and I have, you know, taken some of their feedback, thrown it back into the hopper, spent some things through and then, you know, re-present to them. And so I would invite, you know, of course, everyone, as I said, to ask questions or, you know, concern, address concerns. If two members of the Personnel and Budget Committee here have any comments that they'd like to add as I go through, please feel free to do so because you know this information as well as, as anyone. So for those who can remember back to late September, the, the council approved a preliminary levy increase for 2022 of 17.41%. That has not changed but for two one hundredths of a percent. As you may recall, we're not allowed to increase that. So whatever final budget for 22 is adopted, it cannot go above 17.41%. It can go below 17.41%. And we had some dental insurance estimates come in that, for 22, that suggested of savings of maybe $500. So the numbers you'll see in here reflect a 17.39% levy increase in 22. But the preliminary was 17.41%, which as everyone in here knows, was filed with the county. And everyone in here has likely received their preliminary property tax statements for 2022, which reflects not necessarily the 17.41%, you know, on the bottom line because there are considerations for county and school district as well. But the 17.41% from a city levy is reflected in those property tax statements. Overall, some major considerations, of course, there are hundreds of considerations that are made when pulling the budget together, but some key ones that I want to call attention to. Conservative utility revenue and community center revenue projections. We've had, and this was discussed in September, and the Personnel and Budget Committee is very familiar with it, in their utility spaces and our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, electric in particular. We've seen some decreases particularly, particularly in the commercial and industrial usage area. We, so far, have been able to attribute some of that, at least to certainly the shutdowns during the pandemic. But also it's entirely likely that our major commercial users have been able to recognize some efficiencies through the pandemic and have found some ways to, to save on utility usage. So from a utility revenue standpoint, we were trying to be as conservative as we felt was appropriate for 2022 revenue projections. If we come in above projections, that's great, but I'd rather come in a little bit, have it that direction than overshoot our mark. And similarly for the community center. Again, no surprise to anyone here, but the community center has continued to see a decreased overall membership revenues starting from, you know, back in 2019 and then certainly through the pandemic. Memberships are creeping back up somewhat steadily, but we're still not seeing membership numbers rise to pre-pandemic levels. And so we were also very conservative in our 2022 revenue projections for the community center as conversations around the future of that operation continue at the city and community level. Maintaining contributions to the Highway 169 abatement. This is the fund that has some matching dollars from the county that we've, the city committed to setting aside funds for back in 2006, 2007. There were a number of years when the city did not contribute any funds to. And so we're, in a sense, playing a little bit of catch up with contributing those funds. This year in 2021, we're contributing $170,000 or levying for $170,000 to contribute to that fund, which can, those funds can then be used along with some matching county funds for economic development projects along the 169 corridor and the top of the hill. So the 22 budget, as you'll see here, as we talked about September, we're proposing $185,000 abatement contribution. Inflationary trends. Given the national economy, the Consumer Price Index has increased materially this year. And so we, you know, try as best we can to look into our crystal ball and, and see what things are going to cost as far as not only labor and, but also supplies. County property valuation changes. We discussed this again back in September. But Jasper and I met with La Sour County representatives earlier this summer to, to see what the future may bring for, for residential property valuation changes in the future. And at that time, the estimate was somewhere between maybe 15 and 20%. Not for this coming year, but for the payable 2023. Anyone who's looked at their property tax statement that they received in the last week likely noticed somewhere between maybe a 2% to 6% increase somewhere in there. Some maybe higher than that, some lower, but in general, you know, maybe a 3% to 4% increase. We're still projecting a very significant increase coming into the payable 2023 year, which I would say that's one of the hotter topics that we've discussed at Personnel and Budget is what the future of residential property values will do to not only our budget, but what it means for increasing the levy now versus later when an increase in property valuations will in and of itself raise taxes. And then finally, continuing capital funding to avoid deviating from our pavement and sidewalk plans. So the city in the past several years has implemented some, I would say, pretty progressive pavement and sidewalk maintenance plans, which commits funds to ensuring that both our streets and our sidewalks are, have the funds they need to be updated and maintained regularly. So we don't fall into a, a situation where, you know, we stop funding streets for a number of years and then those streets aren't going to just improve themselves and they're not going to stop deteriorating just because we don't set aside tax dollars. So there was, you'll see in our capital plan, there's a, an effort, a recommendation to, to continue with that effort. So overall, this is, this is the, the summary sheet showing our overall tax levy, our 2021 budget on the far left hand side, our 22 proposed budget, and then the, the year to year changes both in dollars and percentages. Again, really nothing on here, truly nothing on here has changed from the late September adoption of the prelim levy with the exception of a small amount of dollars in the general fund. Again, from some health insurance information that came in between September and now. So overall, looking at an increase to the levy of $460,288. And as with September, this, this chart here, which we looked at then, has not changed. Maybe a couple cents in the upper brackets in terms of home values. But this, this chart looks at 2021, actual, the city tax impact to a property in the city of La Sour, the 2022 proposed city tax, and then what the annual increase looks like, and then the, the monthly breakouts. And what that looks like for an individual taxpayer. So if your value, if your home value is $206,000, the, this $460,000 levy increase that we're talking about here would have roughly an $18.50 impact on your monthly taxes. So understanding that you can pay taxes either through a home, an escrow account if you have your mortgage or some people pay them twice a year if you break it down by month. And we do that just because a lot of people, that's how their budget is on a month, a monthly basis. So $18.50 would be your monthly increase for this proposed budget.
That 206 number, is that the average value of a home in La Sour?
That's the average value of a home. So we've had, we have a couple conflicting pieces of information. We get some information from the county, we get some information from the census. The census shows the actual home values. And Jasper, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, but I want to say somewhere in the lower 190s, the last data that we had. But we've used 206 historically, thinking of the last one or two budget cycles. And that's around where median home values have been.
Gentlemen, if you're going to have any questions, please make sure your mic is on so everybody can hear. Thank you.
So as I mentioned, capital, so CIP and CEP are Construction in Progress slash Capital Equipment, Planning, Purchases, plays a significant role in our budget. And if you were to look back at the original tax levy, we do levy dollars specifically for general fund capital purchases. And that goes into our Fund 420. Our utilities have their own capital purchases and that capital projects, and we'll talk about those in a minute. But this is for the general fund specifically. The importance of this chart that I, that I want to highlight is, this is a list of, and I wouldn't even say it's an exhaustive list, but this is the list of projects that when Jasper and I first met with Personnel and Budget, staff had presented as, these are items that need to be addressed. And this is what our best estimate of is of those, of the prices that would, the cost to remedy the situation. The total amount for all of those projects as initially requested was $2.27 million, which was a lot of money, too high. So and now of that, I will say that a, you know, roughly $600,000 of that is not local cost. So there are a number of projects, for example, the airport, where every dollar we spend in specific buckets in the airport gets, we get reimbursed by the FAA for roughly 90% of those costs. So there are a portion of those total project cost. And then of that $2.27 million, 1.63 would be the actual levied amount for those projects. Through a lot of conversations with staff and extensive prioritization, we were able to get that list down to the far right column, the proposed local cost. So any projects you see that have a zero dollar in there are effectively projects, with the exception of the outdoor hockey rink net, which is still on there, but we're hoping to get some, some donations for that. But for example, the City Hall office renovation has been eliminated. The Bruce Frank Field Rehab Project for $150,000 has been eliminated. Parkmaster Plan, project allocation has been eliminated. Outdoor pool bath floors and fixture upgrades, which if anyone's been in the outdoor pool in the last number of years knows this needs to be done. But it's not absolutely crucial to the functioning of the pool itself. Those items have been eliminated. So, and the reason we targeted this $736, roughly $1,000 is we, these are the items that at a minimum, staff felt and Personnel and Budget looked at very closely to maintain our current operations and to keep on the path for continuing progress, in particular around streets and sidewalks. This would be the dollar amount that would be required to, there is recommended to, to stay on that path. Of that $736,000, you know, more than half of that is, is in streets and sidewalks. $350,000 in annual street maintenance and $60,000 in annual sidewalk maintenance. So there's 420K just to stay on plan with our streets and, and sidewalks. And so you'll notice that the $736,000, what we've budgeted for a levy is $700,000 in the proposed budget, 700,000. We are estimating that we will come in a little bit under budget in our 2021 capital. So we will end 2021 with a fund balance around $30,000 in Fund 420, which is how we can then levy for initial $700,000 and have the balance of this list covered by the fund balance that we'll have in that capital fund at the end of 2021. Are there any questions on this slide? And we can certainly come back to. So as I mentioned, the enterprise funds have a completely separate capital list, and they run independent of the general fund, right? Because they're, they're not funded through levy dollars. It's funded through revenues within each, each utility. But I thought it was nice to be able to break this out here so everyone can see what kind of capital dollars we'll be spending within our enterprise funds. So overall, in 2022, what we are budgeting for in our enterprise funds, so again, water, wastewater, electric, stormwater and refuse. Refuge doesn't get any capital dollars, but electric, wastewater, water and stormwater, $182,000 in cash projects and 11, little over $11 million in debt or bonded projects, of which $3.2 million is our, our share, the city's share of the Casas 36 project. Again, that will be a county-city project or county project that we can take advantage of, where the county pays. The majority of the road costs, we pay for things like we have to update utilities, walkways, things like that. And the, so again, cash is really minimal. The attempt will be to roll as much into as much of those bonded expenses into single issuances as we can. Because A, interest rates, if they still remain low, there is a benefit to being able to borrow for those dollars instead of using cash, in particular for our wastewater fund, which as everyone knows is, you know, we're, we're getting there, right? We've got a few years to go yet. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but there's just not a lot of cash on hand, but we have a lot of needs within the wastewater space. And if we can roll things into a single issuance like we did in with our 2021 A Main Street Water Tower Fire Truck and Snowplow, we can save a whole lot of money in issuance expenses through bond, bond fees and things like that. So these are all broken out. Again, the information's all in your packet. This is the death by PowerPoint section. Anything in black is cash. Anything in highlighted red is proposed to be bonded for. And for those who have, I guess for, for everyone's benefit, and this was part of my education too, over the last six months, was reviewing the number of these projects here that have been on a capital list in the past. And through, and not only these enterprise capitalists, but also the general fund capitalists, we've had a number of these items on capitalists in the past that have been cut from the budget and so continued to be bumped out in the capital plan. I simply take the substation work, for example, cut it out of the 2021 budget and paste it into the 2022 cell in our capital plan, just because money is a finite substance. So here's the electric fund. Wastewater fund, a lot of these items have been, and if Rich were here, he would tell you these have been on, some of these have been on here quite, quite a while. And again, the Casas 36 or the South Main project, all the work is, is included here. There's $800,000 of this, $2 million in wastewater that's specific to sanitary sewer updates on South Main. When the county comes through for that. Water, the majority of this is between two things. One is Casas 36 and then the High Zone redundant water line. So that's, that's a redundant water line that city really needs to run along Forest Prairie up in the direction of Cambria, because we only have one line. And you can imagine what it would do if that were interrupted, that service were interrupted at any point for Cambria. From an economic development standpoint. So again, trying to run a redundant water line up Forest Prairie for not only current state, but also for future economic development. Stormwater. Through a backhoe loader, we discussed this at Personnel and Budget, and forgive me if the, if I mentioned this at the September meeting, but one of the capital items that's on every, that's both on Enterprise and on the general fund list is a rubber tire backhoe, which the city would propose purchasing and share the cost between stormwater, electric and public works, because all three units would be able to utilize it. So general fund would not have to bear the cost for all of that. Stormwater is a paltry $3,000, but it's something. So, and actually, most of this was answered when you asked your question, President Krogman, but next steps, again, at this point, we're looking for feedback. We're at 17.39% levy increase $460,000 in 2022. And between now and December 13th is is feedback time. We've received a lot of feedback from Personnel and Budget in our conversations. And we need to file both with the state and with the county, our final levy and final budgets by the end of December, which is why that December 13th is a critical time for, for the city to get that finalized. So we can have a week or so to get everything we need to the state and the county. And then at that December 13th meeting, in addition to being the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, we'll do a final presentation on the budget based upon any feedback we receive tonight or in the next couple of weeks. We'll also share the final proposed 2022 governmental fee schedule, which is standard. Every year we, city issues a new fee schedule for things like rental of, rental of vehicles for water meter, replacement water meters, permits, things like that. And then also either Stacy or Jasper, both will be preparing a performance pay plan for 2022. There's some updates to that that they'll present at the next meeting. That's, that's it in a nutshell. And it's, again, it, it's the, just another step in a long process. Personnel and Budget, this shouldn't be a surprise to any of them. So I'll entertain any questions.
Listen, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to make a statement based on what I've heard from people around town. They think that this is basically exorbitant and unnecessary that we've got projects that we've got forward in 2022 that we can, we're too aggressive, we can scale back some of the projects. And a lot of people feel that we shouldn't be above the state average of 6.6%, which is probably going to drop down to a 6%. And that would mean we'd have to cut out another 290,000 from this. I just wanted to make the statement based on what I've heard.
First, I want to say I commend you for the people who are on the Personnel and Budget in meeting 12 times in the last five months, or it was, as you had said, is incredible. And I appreciate that. I too have heard a lot about the large increase. But I have one question regarding that. I know our Personnel and Budget meeting is actually open to the public. Have we had anybody from the public show up in any of the meetings?
No. No one has appeared.
Okay.
Nor have we received any, to my knowledge, any comments to pass along, so to speak. And those meetings are all, as you are aware, they're publicly announced, they're, you know, noticed, as we say.
Okay. That's all I had to say about that. So thank you for all your work on it.
Anybody else?
Well, there was one more thing I wanted to say. It seems to be now coming back on City Council and being off for nine months and getting more of the people out there, talking to people. I want to just make a statement that we on the City Council are also residents of La Sourd, and also have to pay the taxes as well. And so we're not doing this to get everybody else and we're exempt from it. It's affecting us too. And that's a statement I wanted to make too. So, thank you.
I do have some additional information that I'll share if, if it's of interest. And this is just around utility rates, if you'd like to step into the context.
We're going to switch to utility rates. We can come back to any of this, but go ahead.
Yes, we can. So this, the proposals for, because of course this, discussions around utility rates fall under the umbrella of our conversations within Personnel and Budget from a standpoint that each of our utilities have proposed increases to those rates. So looking at increases in utility rates, we know the county is, has preliminarily put forth a roughly 7% levy increase to countywide taxes in 2022. So certainly, you know, there's, I suspect there's been some feedback on utility rates out there in the context of broader budget conversations. But I just wanted to throw this up here, just a few slides on our utility rates, both the current being 2021 rates and then the rates for 2022. Essential water, non-essential water and wastewater. So essential water again would be that water that is regularly metered, meaning we charge a sewer charge with it. So most, this is what every home has an essential water meter. And that water meter, however long it runs, however many gallons are consumed during the month, there is a, a corresponding sewer charge added to those dollars or added to those gallons. Non-essential water is in the vernacular, a, an irrigation meter. So a meter that is, does not, does not have a sewer charge related to it because it's typically for outdoor use only. And so overall with water, you know, we're looking at, and these are residential and commercial, you can see the meter access fee, that's the monthly charge for each size meter. Most residences have a 5/8 inch meter, some still have an inch, a 1-inch meter. And then from there, inch and a half all the way to six inches typically are commercial industrial users. So we have our meter access fee, which is a single flat fee that's charged each month. And then we charge per 1,000 gallons for essential water, for non-essential water, and then for wastewater. And essential water, roughly a 2% year-to-year increase, 2% to 3% increase. Wastewater in being consistent with the initial sewer rate plan that was implemented Jasper in 2019, late 2019, I believe, all for a 7.8% increase to sewer rates. There was a 7.8% increase leading into 2021, and the proposal is to continue that into 2022.
Mr. Roby, if you would stop for a moment on that, let's explain to the council and the public why it is that we have to catch up on the wastewater bond, wastewater costs. There's something that happened in the past. What was it?
Jasper may be able to provide better historical context than can I, but we, there is a period of time, and Jasper, you can provide more detail, but there's a period of time when there were not increases to not follow the expenses for the wastewater fund, in particular around the wastewater treatment facility in the context of Murpuck. And we now currently, the city of La Sourd pays both the city of La Sourd and the city of Henderson portion of the, the bond for the wastewater treatment facility, which was refinanced in 2014, I believe. And that bond, payment for that bond is roughly $1.1 million per year. And that will, our last payment for that is in 2027. So we are in a sense playing catch-up to pay for the treatment facility that was required back in.
Mr. Sullivan.
Joe or Jasper, I don't, doesn't matter which one of you answered, but you just said we paid La Sourd and Henderson's portion.
Correct.
But the reason behind that is because we bought Henderson out, correct, of Murpuck.
I believe that's correct. Jasper, can you?
Yes, I can chime in a little bit. So yeah, exactly right, Councilmember Sullivan. When, when we dissolved Murpuck, that was part of the deal, where we took on Henderson's PFA payments until the end of it, which is 2027. And, you know, that was all a negotiated effort to dissolve Murpuck. But what, what Joe is alluding to is when we sold the bond or, you know, the PFA loan for the wastewater plant, just the, the city of La Sourd portion, we have run that, that fund in, into deficit ever since it started, basically. And at one point in time, we had to, we had to refund the, the loan with PFA and they worked with us and we were able to refund it and get a different amortization schedule, reduce our payment. And, and we're still making, we're making, we're, we're making all of our payments. It's just, our fund is holding a deficit and eventually we need to get out of that deficit. And right now, it's looking like it'll likely be in 2027 is when we'll, we'll be able to get out of deficit in that fund. So in order to make sure that that happens, you know, we need to have this kind of planned increase of the 7.8% each year. And, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at it each year too. So if we don't need it, we're not going to do it. But, you know, the fund is still operating in deficit and it has, you know, for over a decade. So we're just trying to dig out of that hole. And, you know, we have a plan. We, we know the finances, you know, we're making some projections as far as revenues go. And I think we're doing, you know, projecting conservatively. So, so we can stick to the plan and eventually get out of the, the deficit that we have in that fund.
Jasper, you used two terms, I think we need to explain. Murpuck, what was Murpuck? Who was involved and what happened to it? And also PFA was used. I think we need to be clear what that is, how that affects financial issues.
Yeah. Yeah. So Murpuck was the Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission. It was a public utilities commission with Henderson and La Sourd forming it. So it's a, it's, it's, it was a standalone entity which had representation from both Henderson and La Sourd. So that group has since been dissolved. I think that was dissolved in 2019, end of 2019, if I remember right. And, and the public, PFA is the Public Facilities Authority, which is a state agency that, that can loan money at a very low interest rate to public facilities like the city of La Sourd. And it's mostly for infrastructure projects like wastewater. Our well number eight is using PFA loan as well. So it's for major infrastructure projects that the city takes on. It allows us to get favorable financing for it at a, at a very low interest rate, generally right around that 1% mark.
Jasper, if I may, let me explain something and have you make sure I've said it correctly. When we had the Murpuck, Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission, Henderson and La Sourd were a part of that. When that was dissolved, the entire plant, wastewater plant became under the operation and the responsibility of the city of La Sourd. And we now contract with Henderson to be able to process their wastewater. But it's really now our plant, we manage it. We don't have the issues we had with Murpuck in terms of making decisions, having two communities involved on a board. If I stated that correctly, and would you like to either, and would you like to add anything to it? So?
No, I'd say that's all accurate. The wastewater plant is now, yeah, solely owned by the city No, I, I'd say that's all accurate. The, the wastewater plant is now, yeah, solely owned by the city of La Sure. We have the ability to, you know, treat wastewater from other agencies like, like Henderson on a contract basis. And we do have a current contract with Henderson to treat their wastewater. I think for, it was a twenty-year, year, an agreement, and we're, I think, in year two of it. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's working out well, I think. You know, when, when, when looking at Murpuck versus what we have now. So I think it's, it's working out very well.
Thank you. Mr. Roby, do you have anything further?
I'd just like to share the electric rates.
Go ahead.
So electric rates, as council's familiar with, back in, earlier this summer, council approved the updated electric rates for two thousand and twenty-two based upon the large cost of service study that was done by an outside engineering firm. And so this is just a, a picture of year-to-year what electric rates look like. What, what I like about this format is that we've effectively eliminated both the franchise fee and the underground conversion fee. So currently when utility customers get a bill, there are several line items on that bill. And we get a lot of questions, oh, what does a franchise fee mean? What does an underground conversion fee mean? Effectively, long-term, in, in the planning, we were able to eliminate those by rolling those into the, the per kilowatt charge. So that'll be changing effective January first. In addition, we'll start charging some seasonality on our electric usage. So, call it summer versus winter, or summer versus every other season. In the past, we would charge a flat kilowatt, kilowatt hour rate year-round. Energy is more expensive to buy during the summer months when utilization is higher. And so these, the new rates reflect that. So for residents, residential customers, currently their base fee is ten dollars fifty cents a month. That would be moving to twenty dollars per month. And again, that's flat rate to have a meter, to have the service, whether you use electricity or not. And then per kilowatt hour, June through September, currently you pay ten point five three six cents per hour. In two thousand and twenty-two would be twelve point four cents per kilowatt hour. And then you'd be paying a little bit less in October through May per kilowatt hour for, for electricity. And then we have similar breakouts for both our small rural customers. We have a new class in two thousand and twenty-two, our large rural, where there's demand charges on electricity. Again, there's some seasonality to, to demand for our large rural customers. I'm gonna switch to the next one quickly. And there's also seasonality for a large general for a demand again, because higher usage in the summer nationally and regionally, means that we pay more for electricity to, for them provide it to customers. We pay less for it in October through May, so we don't anticipate charging as much. The base fees per month for all of our classes, you'll see, are, are moving up. So it's hard to say exactly, if you were to ask for all customers, is electricity going to be more expensive? No. For all customers, is it going to be less expensive? No. It's going to really depend on which type of customer, which rate class do you fall into, and what utilization is at what times of year. That's really gonna determine what your, what your electric bill would look like, starting with the January two thousand and twenty-two bill, which customers will receive in early February of twenty-two. And we've had up on our website, city website now for a few months, some comparisons, so people can, can look at what they're paying right now, what they might be paying in the future based upon what their utilization is. And certainly the, you know, we are open anytime for phone calls. You know, during business hours, if someone has a question or wants to know, hey, if this is my average usage now, what's my bill going to be come January of twenty-two? We're certainly happy to answer those kinds of questions. And same with water and sewer as well. We can look at prior usage. Question, Councilmember.
Thank you. Do you have anything further? Joe?
Just some more fun on stormwater rates. Stormwater rates, which we're planning to increase roughly ten percent per year, and that was a previous plan. This fund, again, was just recently established within the past few years, and we're just starting to build up a fund balance which would be needed so that we can actually maintain our stormwater system, whereas in the past, maintenance for stormwater would either come out of the water wastewater fund or some of the labor out of the public works fund. So this way, to be, to remain compliant with, you know, a lot of the state's regulations around, you know, treatment of stormwater or handling of stormwater, it's advantageous for us to have a stormwater fund, so we have some funds that we can maintain the system and comply with regulations. And then I just have refuse rates here, which will be changing along with waste management, our contract with waste management. Every year, there's a rate increase between two and a half and three percent. So that's the proposal is to increase, increase the cost to customers by that as well. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Jasper, as your city administrator, do you have anything further to add to all of this?
I do not. Joe did a nice job of summarizing kind of everything we've been working on over the last few months.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Joe or Jasper, just out of curiosity, obviously, one of the things we hear as council people is how much more expensive it is to live here compared to other surrounding communities. Have we done any research on where we compare to those communities or any of the other surrounding communities?
We have, yes. And as, as you might suspect, it does depend on what your utilization is. And it's when people ask me that question, there two things I caution them on. One is what their utilization is, right? If they're a heavy water user in, in St. Peter, they will pay more because of St. Peter's water rates. If they are if they are a electric customer, depending on what their utilization is, you know, we charge a base fee and then we charge per kilowatt hours. There are some that have tiered electric usage. So one through, you know, five hundred kilowatts is one rate. And then as you go up in usage, your rate will change, whereas here it's a flat rate. If you're a residential customer class, it's one through whatever your electric usage is, you get that kilowatt hour rate. And, you know, the other thing I caution people on is that it, not all cities operate all of these utilities. So certain cities have other electric co-ops or, you know, Excel Energy, for example, providing their electric service. Some that may charge more for stormwater. Some like in Henderson where wastewater is, is built through the city of La Sure. So it's difficult to compare side by side exactly. But we, Rich actually started building a model where we can plug in a specific usage for water and sewer, usage for electric, and then a base stormwater refuse assumption to calculate side by side what the rates are. And overall, I would say we're comparable. We plugged in our two thousand and twenty-two proposed rates, and we're higher than comparable communities, but those were comparing against their two thousand and twenty-one rates. And again, it really depends on what your usage is. If you fall into a higher or lower tier in a cer- certain community, you may pay more than, than we charge. And again, getting back to, you know, I would say this is true of wastewater, which we've already discussed, but it's also true of certainly electric as well, is, you know, we had a period of, I wanna say almost ten years, Jasper, where there were no electric rate increases. Which is a great thing, except that you develop a significant backlog in maintenance. And so when all of a sudden you have to start paying for a PFA loan, or a bond, or pay cash for projects or expenses that are predictable expenses, you don't have money on hand to do so, and so you have to raise your rates at a more aggressive rate. Stormwater, or excuse me, wastewater, seven point eight percent. I don't know what that rate increase might have been, had we increased, had the city increased ten, fifteen years ago. But it's safe to assume that it wouldn't necessarily have to be seven point eight percent. But the fund's been a deficit long enough, we cannot operate in a deficit like that, so we have to increase our rates. You know, I've, I've seen it in my own research in the last several months, that communities, when they get a new water treatment facility or new wastewater treatment plant, have a stiff increase in their rates because they suddenly have to pay it. So, if you see a city that has really low rates in something, I would also look to see if they're going to have any major capital expenditures in the next couple of years that will necessitate a drastic increase in their rates. They may have had low rates for a long, long time, just like we did. If someone had asked ten years ago, why are wastewater or electric rates so low? You know, they, they could have looked at our capital plan and seen that, well, we may need to invest some money in the future, so our rates won't stay that low for very long. Jasper, anything you wanna add to that?
No, I think, you know, we have, we have a, you know, we've done cost of service studies here. We kinda know what, what to expect, and we've tied that to our capital planning. So what we're trying to do is just be proactive about what we wanted, what we, what we wanna do or what we need to do here. And then make sure that we're, we're planning appropriately with our rates, so that, you know, we can make some adjustments now as opposed to, you know, large hikes in the future. So we're trying to kinda level out any increases and have them be more linear as opposed to giant spikes like, like Joe alluded to. So, that's where we're at, and that's kinda the plan that we've been following for the last few years. And, you know, I think that if we stick to the plan, we, we won't see any huge spikes, hopefully.
Councilmembers, any other comments or questions? Let me make a couple at this point then. I think as we look at this, this is not easy stuff. This is hard work. And we know it affects our community, our citizens. But a couple of questions we have to ask ourselves. Number one is, are we doing what is best for our community? Are we doing what is best for our community? The second would be, are we going to pay more later for what we don't do next year? You've just heard some good examples of what happened in the past. So we have to figure out a balance here. Are we going to pay more later for what we don't do next year? And finally, if council members or citizens have specific suggestions, we'd like to hear them so that we can process them ahead of time. You can't do that last minute. We've got a deadline coming up. We're gonna meet one time in the month of December, and then we have until the end of that month to make sure we certify this to the county. So we wanna work on this as a community, wanna work on this together, and we'll do the best we can. We thank our city administrator and our finance director for giving us all the information. But I hate to tell you, gentlemen, not hate to tell you, I will simply remind myself and you, we're the ones that make the decisions. They give us the information, but the buck stops with us. And we're responsible for what's trying to figure out what's, what's best for our community. So, thank you. Anything further before I close this part of the meeting? We're not voting anything, we're simply taking input and, and giving input. Well, again, thanks to our staff for providing the information. We're gonna move to the next item on the agenda. This is to certified delinquent utility accounts. Mr. Roby and Mr. Krugel, if you'd wanna take over, please.
Sure. So, I'm not gonna move on there yet, cause I don't want anyone to read it yet. I mean, it's fine if you do, it's in your packet, but I'd just rather talk through it first. So, this is a process that the city has undertaken for several years now. The city has the ability to certify delinquent utility accounts to property taxes. The process for that is, as you all know, we send out utility bills to all of our customers once a month. At the end of July, when we send out the July bill, at the end, once that bill has been sent out, we allow one month. So the end of August, when that July bill is due, any utilities from the July bill going back to the previous certification that are unpaid, we develop a list, and it's a long list. And as you recall from our initial conversation back in October, we were at about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that as of the July thirty-first utility bill, there were, that was the, the delinquent total. All property owners, or excuse me, all customers who fell into that total were sent a letter explaining the process, explaining the, the amount that they owed in delinquent utilities, and laid out what their options were for, for taking care of their outstanding expenses and the timeline that was required for the process. Between early October and today, we received about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in delinquent utility payments. So as of today, the list that you will have in your packet is just north of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And those are all, again, all of these individuals have received letters. In addition to their monthly bills, many of them have had phone conversations with staff and city hall. So it is, it's understood by everyone on this list, why they are on this list, and they've been given adequate, what I believe is adequate opportunity to, to remedy their, their delinquent utilities. The process at this point would be for council tonight to consider a resolution, which would then take this total one hundred and ninety-three thousand twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. The resolution would allow me to send this list in this total dollar amount to La Sure County, will then apply those delinquent dollars to the two thousand and twenty-two property taxes for those utility customers. When those dollars are applied to two thousand and twenty-two's property taxes, they are required to be paid in two thousand and twenty-two. So they're, unlike some of our other special assessments for things like roadwork and things like that, that we allow maybe fifteen years, for example. Cause two thousand and twenty-two is an example of that, it was, if you didn't pay it in full, that was okay. It would be assessed to your property taxes over the course of fifteen years with some interest. When these dollars are assigned to two thousand and twenty-two property taxes, they're expected to be paid in two thousand and twenty-two. And the county will apply a percentage fee, this last year it was six percent, onto whatever that total is. So if someone owes us a hundred dollars today and they're on that list, they can expect that amount to be added to their property tax statement when they receive it early in two thousand and twenty-two. Historically, the city has collected almost all of the dollars that it certifies to property taxes, simply because everyone is legally required to pay their property taxes, and if they don't do so, then they can enter into delinquent property tax process, which is much more, it can be an extended process, so then we may not see our dollars for a few years. But in general, we see most of those dollars come in the following year. So the hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars that you see today is just slightly below what the amount was last year. It's a significant dollar amount, for sure. I have to say, I expected it to be notably higher this year, given economic uncertainty and given the fact that since the pandemic, the city has not charged late fees on utility bills. There are many options available to individuals who, you know, even those who are not on this list, who, who may have concerns overpaying their utility bills. There are some programs through Minnesota Valley Action Council and the state of Minnesota that can provide material assistance to individuals. Historically, it's been assistance for electric bills. But about a month ago or so, we received notice from the state that they would, they had a limited amount of funds that they would be able to provide for support for water bills for utility customers in Minnesota. And so we have a number of customers who take advantage of those programs, and we receive then payments. And so we have a number of customers who take advantage of those programs, and we receive then payments directly from from the Minnesota Valley Action Council to, to help pay the utility bills. We also offer budget billing, which is available to all customers. And essentially, we look at someone's average usage for the prior year and and figure an, an average monthly bill and build them that exact amount every month. So that's, it's predictable and consistent. And then the following year, we, we true up, right? So we determine, okay, was your usage over the last year higher than that? Was it lower than that? Next year, do we need to increase your budget bill amount or decrease your budget bill amount based upon that? We also, just in general, make available payment plans. So if someone says I have a, a delinquent balance of four hundred dollars, I can pay my current bill plus a hundred dollars a month for the next four months to get myself out of arrears. That's certainly something that we can make available to, to customers, and we do work with customers on that. I would always rather work with customers upfront than to have to certify anything, but this is a, a, a good tool that the city can use to make sure that we are paid the, the funds that are, that are due for our utilities. Any questions?
Any questions for, for him?
Yeah, I have, you know, I'm always amazed of the dollar amount that's not paid. I'm always amazed by that. But I'm also why would, looking at some of these dollar amounts of real low, somewhere like five dollars and somewhere thousands of dollars, I would, if you've given them enough letters, phone calls, or whatever we're doing to get the five dollars and forty-three cents paid, why would they choose not to pay the five dollars and forty-three cents? I don't understand the, do you have any idea?
So I know for, for some of these, in particular, some of the lower dollar amounts, you know, we've, we've run into situations where and, and I know this because when I moved last year, I, I learned this myself, where if you're on auto pay for your utility bill and you move, that auto pay will not will not generate a payment for your final utility bill. So it gets complicated at, at home closings because of, you know, the date of closing can change, and so the final bill amount may change. But we do have some customers who, if they move and they've been on auto pay, will end up having a balance on here from the last, say, two or three days that they were in their residence, that auto pay will not process. I will say, however, that everyone that that circumstance pertains to are contacted by staff to remind them, you know, phone calls, messages. Again, everyone gets the letter. So if anyone gets a letter or a phone call, you know, the, the expectation is ideally be able to have them contact us and make a one-time payment, for example, to clear up that balance.
So what happens if you say you
But, excuse me, make sure he has a microphone.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So you have it assessed to a certain property then, but they sold that place. Who, who gets that?
So it, that also gets complicated because the, the assessment follows the property, not the individual. So if you, so the, the ideal situation is, and, and I answer probably three to four of these a week, is a title company will contact me and they'll say, I am selling, I have a closing on this property on Fifth Street. They will ask, what is the utility bill as of right now? When's the bill due? Give me an estimate of what the final bill will be, so that the title company will then go to both the buying and the selling Realtor and say, okay, just so you know, this is what the final bill is going to be. And then they negotiate at closing, who's going to pay what? But we do have situations that come up where a title company doesn't do a search of the property for assessments. So we, we've even had this come up with like the Cassat twenty-two assessment, you know, most residents has got a seventy-five hundred dollar assessment, right? And so some people paid upfront, some people got assessed and they paid over fifteen years. If that's not settled at closing, a buyer of a property can get stuck with a surprise because they, they buy a property, that assessment follows the property, not the previous owner. So we really encourage Realtors and title companies and property owners to call us, and we can do a quick search to say, hey, you've got, you know. So I've even done some in the last couple of weeks where they say, hey, we're selling this property. And I'll say, that's fine, you know, I'm not going to stop you, but just so you know, there's three hundred and fifty dollars delinquent utilities here that might get assessed. And then they'll take it back to the Realtor, and then the buyer and seller can negotiate it.
Thank you for a good question. Joe, if I may, all the, all the people, all the properties, rather, that are listed here on the delinquent account, appendix A, is provided to the council are behind. They, they've been notified but haven't paid, to be clear.
Correct.
Okay. One other quick question. It, it would seem from some of them, you can tell just by the, the name of the property, the way it's titled. A lot of these are rentals, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, but the landlord, the owner of the property is ultimately responsible.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we have some situations in town where the landlord will make an arrangement to, they will pay all the utilities, and then they work it out in their contract so that the, the renters or the, the lessees will reimburse or pay the landlord. That way the landlord can avoid ever being on this list. But a number of them, the, the bill, it, the primary bill itself goes to the renter, but a copy of the bill goes to the landlord. So the landlord is at least aware of what's going on. But that's why we send the letters to the proper, to the, to the landlord of the owner of the property, because ultimately, they're the ones who will be assessed if the bill is not paid.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments before we move to the resolution? Do you have another slide or does it stay with this?
No, this isn't.
Okay. The, the resolution has been provided to all the council members. It's resolution R two zero two one dash zero four five. There are four whereas's, one of which is to note the appendix A, which is the list of these properties. And then the resolution would read, now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the city of La Sure hereby certifies the delinquent utility accounts in the amount of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents to the La Sure County, to La, to La Sure County for collection in two thousand and twenty-two. Would one of the council members want to make a motion?
I do.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Huntington moved. Mr. Sullivan seconded. Is there any discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. We'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. We now move to the time for comments, reports, items of appreciation. We'll go in the order shown here. Actually, I'll as the person presiding at the meeting, I'll go last tonight after of those listed here on the council. So Mark Huntington, it's your turn.
Hey.
Anything?
My first on something.
We want to get the, the person new on the council again to give his first chance.
Well, I had my first meeting on, I was asked to go to the MRVT meeting.
Which is what, please?
Minnesota River Valley Transit Authority.
Thank you.
Yeah, in St. Peter, where we what did we do? Did a resolution to pay for, buy a new bus, two of them, actually, I believe it was. Just regular business for the place and good to be back in that group.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Okay, we'll go to council member Lozey. Anything? Nothing. Thank you. Mr. Slater?
Nothing significant to report tonight.
Okay. Council member Sullivan?
Uh, nothing to report. He already covered it, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Okay. And I don't have anything either. So let's, let's turn to our city administrator. Actually, I, I can tell you that there will be a meeting tomorrow, tomorrow morning of the Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, our electrical wholesale provider, of which we're a part with eleven other communities, but there's really nothing to report at this point. Administrator Krugel, what might you have for us this evening?
You know, I don't really have anything either, other than wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving holiday coming up here.
I did have something, if I just thought of it. My understanding is that we, there is an intent for the city council to participate in the parade on December thirtieth, holiday parade.
Yeah, but, yep, December third, we will have a float. So if, if, if you can attend, that would be great to participate in the parade. I'll, I'll, I'll be sending more information out about that.
Just wanted to give people a heads up, so.
Yep.
Okay, anything further? I know where to look for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you, everyone. Motion, uh, meeting adjourned.